Thank you so much. Good morning, everybody. It is now nine oh one on July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four. This is the Orthopedic Specialty Surgery Center LLC docket number twenty-four dash three-two-six-nine-seven dash C O N. Good morning. Thank you all for being here today. Healthcare Ortho Management LLC and Orthopedic Specialty Surgery Center LLC. The applicants in this matter seek a certificate of need for the transfer of a healthcare facility pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Section nineteen A dash six thirty-eight, parent small A, parent two. Specifically, Health Ortho Man- Health Plus Ortho Management LLC seeks to require an additional seventeen point seven percent equity interest in the Orthopedic Specialty Surgery Center LLC. Throughout this proceeding, I'll be interchangeably referring to Health Plus Ortho Management LLC as H P O M and Orthopedic Specialty Surgery Center LLC as O S S C, just for brevity purposes. Today is July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four. My name is Alicia Novy. Dr. D J S Gifford, the Commissioner of Health Strategy designated me to serve as Hearing Officer for this matter to rule on all motions and recommend- to rule on all motions and recommended findings of facts and conclusions of law upon completion of the hearing. Public Act number twenty-one dash two, as amended by Public Act twenty-two dash three, authorizes the agency to hold a public hearing by means of electronic equipment. In accordance with this legislation, any person who participates orally in an electronic meeting shall make a good faith effort to state his, her, or their name and title at the outset of each occasion that the person participates orally during an uninterrupted dialogue or series of questions and answers. We ask that all members of the public mute the device that they are using to access this hearing and silence any additional devices around them. Uh, and silence any additional devices that are around them. This public hearing is held pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Section nineteen A dash six thirty-nine A, parent F, or parent small F, parent two of the general statutes that provide, um, of the general statutes provides that H S P may hold a public hearing with respect to any C O N. Application submitted under Chapter three sixty-eight Z. This notice of hearing, uh, sorry. This hearing is being, uh, issued, although this is, sorry, my apologies. Although this is a discretionary hearing that is not governed by the contested case provisions found in Chapter six fifty-four of the, of the general statutes, also known as the Uniform Administrative Procedures Act, or U A P A, and the regulations of the Connecticut State Agencies, the R C S A. At nineteen A dash nine through twenty-four, the matter in which O S E conducts these proceedings will be guided by these statutes and regulations. The Office of Health Strategy is here to assist me in gathering facts related to this application and will be asking the applicant, applicant witnesses questions. At this time, I would like, uh, I'm going to ask each staff person assisting with the hearing today to identify themselves with their name, the spelling of their last name, and their O H S title. We'll start with Steve.
Are you on mute, Steve?
Yes, I think Steve is on mute, yes.
Or his audio is not working?
Yeah, I think his audio is not working. I do apologize. Uh, I will introduce Steve Lazarus. For those of you who do not know him, he is our C O N. Team Manager. Um, I may have gotten his title wrong. I do apologize, Steve. Um, I normally don't introduce everybody. Uh, next I will go to Ms. Faiella, who will be off camera due to some technical issues with our, her new computer.
Good morning. My name is Annie Faiella, F A I E L L A, and I am the C O N. Team Lead.
Ms. Tomczuk?
Good morning. My name is Nicole Tomczuk, T O M C Z U K, and I'm a healthcare analyst.
Thank you. Also present is Leslie Greer, who will be assisting with hearing logistics, gathering the names for public comment and providing other miscellaneous support. The certificate of need process is a regulatory process, and as such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to the applicants, members of the public, and our staff. Our priority is the integrity and transparency of this process. Accordingly, decorum will be, must be maintained by all present during these proceedings. This hearing will be trans- is being transcribed and recorded, and the video will be made available on the O H S website and YouTube account. All documents related to this hearing that have been or will be submitted to O H S are available for review through our certificate of need C O N. Portal, which is accessible from the, on the O H S C O N. Web page. In making my decision, I will consider and make written findings in accordance with Section nineteen A dash six thirty-nine of the Connecticut General Statutes. Lastly, as Zoom notified you, either when you entered this hearing or when recording started, I wish to point out that by appearing on camera in this virtual hearing, you are consenting to being filmed. If you wish to revoke your consent, please do so at this time by exiting the Zoom meeting or this hearing room. All right, I'm going to start by going over the exhibits and the items of which I am taking administrative notice. Then I will ask if there are any objections. The C O N. Portal contains a pre-hearing table of record, and the exhibits are identified in the table from A to K, and I will also be adding exhibit L, which is, um, the attorney's, uh, notice of appearance. Do I, uh, Mr. Lazarus, Ms. Ms. Tomchuk, and Ms. Faiella, any additional exhibits that you would like to turn to the record at this time?
No.
All right, great. The applicant is hereby notice that I am taking administrative notice of the following, of the following documents. One, the statewide facility, uh, the statewide healthcare facilities and services plan and its supplements. Two, the facilities and services inventory. Three, O H S acute care hospital discharge database. Four, the all player can, the all player claims database, claims data, and the hospital reporting system, H R S, financial and utilization data. May also take administrative notice of other O H S decisions, agreed settlements, and determinations that may be relevant to this matter, but which have not yet been identified. I want to ask the counsel for the applicant's Health Plus Ortho Management LLC and Orthopedic Specialty Center LLC, can you please identify yourself for the record?
Sure. Good morning, Officer, Hearing Officer Novy. My name is Vincenzo Coronante, here on behalf of the applicants, uh, from the law firm Shipman and Goodwin.
I'm sorry, I'm going to just ask you to repeat your last name so I can get, uh, the pronunciation.
Sure, um, Coronante, I can, I can. You can also just call me, you can just call me Vin, um, that's probably much easier, or Attorney Vin, if you need to use a title, but you can just use Vin, up to you, Hearing Officer.
I'm gonna, I'm just gonna use your last name just for, um, for, you know, a proper record, but I do like to try and get your last name as correct as possible.
Very much appreciated, no problem.
All right, Attorney Coronante, are there any objections to the exhibits in the table of record or the administrative, administratively noticed documents on, um, and dockets?
No objection.
All right. So all identified and marked exhibits are entered as full exhibits, uh, including your appearance, which thank you for filing. Um, do you have any additional exhibits that you wish to enter at this time?
No, we do not.
Okay, we'll proceed in the order established in the agenda for today's hearing. Like to advise the applicant that we may ask questions related to the application that you may have, you may feel you have already addressed. We will do this for the purpose of ensuring that the public has knowledge about your proposal and for the purpose of clarification. I want to assure you that we have reviewed your application, completeness responses, prefiled testimony, and I will do so again many times before issuing a decision. As this hearing is being held virtually, we ask that, one, all participants, to the extent possible, should be able to use, to, uh, should enable the use of video cameras when testifying or commenting during proceedings. All comments and public, uh, all participants and pub- and the public shall mute their devices and should disable their cameras, uh, when we go off the record or take a break. Please be advised that although, um, that although we will try to shut off hearing recording during breaks, it may continue. If the recording is on, any audio or video that has not been disabled will be accessible to all participants. Public comments will, uh, taken during the hearing will likely go in the order established by O H S during the registration process. However, I may allow public officials to testify out of order. I or O H S staff will call each individual by name when it is their time to speak. Registration for public comment, uh, sorry, I do apologize. Registration for public comment can be done using the Zoom chat function. Please list your name that, that you would like to make out and that you would like to make a public comment in the message. And Ms. Greer will help us assemble that. Public comments are, uh, is scheduled to start at eleven thirty A M. If the technical portion of the hearing is not completed by eleven thirty A M, public comments may need to be postponed until the technical portion is complete. The applicant's witnesses must be available after public comment, as O H S may have follow-up questions based on public comment. If anyone listening to this hearing would like to submit written comments, in lieu of speaking today, you may do so by emailing your comments to C O N. Comment at C T dot gov. Again, that is C O N. C O M as in Mary, M as in Mary, E N T at C T dot G O V. Are there any other housekeeping matters or procedural issues that we need to address before we start? Uh, Mr. Karen on, uh, Nante?
Not on this side, no.
Uh, well, uh, we'll go with Ms. Faiella because we cannot hear Steve.
Oh, thank you.
All right, great. Okay, uh, we will move on to the technical portion in which Attorney Karenante, uh, your opening statement.
Sure, uh, it will be very short. Um, so good morning, Hearing Officer Novy and rest of the Office of Health Strategy staff. Uh, as you can see from the screens before you, uh, we have a team of people here, including H P M folks, uh, folks from the A S C, uh, including, uh, Dr. Buckholzer, our medical director. Uh, we wanted to be sure, we wanted to be sure we have as many people as possible here for you today to answer any of your questions, get you all the information, uh, that you need to make, to make your decision. Uh, with that, um, we'd like to, to jump right in and commence with our prefiled testimony. Um, and we'd start, I'd like to introduce, uh, Walter Lestrange. Uh, I don't know if you need to swear him in or-
I was gonna say, before we start with that, um, would you, I'm gonna swear on all of your witnesses at once. So if you could just name the people who will be, um, the majority of testimony, if you have somebody who will offer one or two comments later, we can swear them in at the time. But, um, let's start with the people who are giving prefiled testimony and all sort of-
I, I think it's easier, um, if each of them identified themselves, um, and some of them are all in the same room. Uh, but I'll start with, um, Walter, who's Walter Lestrange, who's submitting, our only person doing prefiled testimony. He's the chief operating officer of H P M. Um, and then I'll, I'll let every, everyone else, if you can hear me, uh, please introduce yourselves so you can all be sworn in at the same time by Hearing Officer Novy. Eileen's group, I see that's the next, that's the next group on my screen. Can you guys each do that, please?
Yes, my name is Eileen O'Brien. I'm the administrator here at the Orthopedic and Specialty Surgery Center.
I'm Joel Buckholzer. I'm the orthopedic surgeon. I am the medical director of the Orthopedic Specialty and Surgery Center.
I'm gonna ask that you spell your last names just for, I'm sorry, just for the, uh, for our stenographer so that she can properly get your name. So if Eileen, um, I'm sorry.
O'Brien.
O'Brien, if you could spell your last name, please.
O apostrophe B R I E N.
Okay. Then the next person? The doctor, I'm sorry.
Uh, Joel, J O E L, last name is Buckholzer, B as in boy, U C H A L T E R.
From now on, everybody who said their name, if you could just spell your last name at the same time.
Sure, I am Crystal Hancock, H A N C O C K, and I am the Director of Nursing at O S S C.
I'm Lauren Mealy, M E A L E Y, and I'm the Business Office Manager.
And I'm Louis Peralta, P E R A L T A. I'm the Operating Room Manager.
Dave, do you wanna go next?
Yes, thanks. Good morning. Uh, my name is David McCabe, M C C A B E, and I am the Chief Financial Officer for H P O M.
Stu, do you wanna go next?
Sure. Good morning. I'm Stuart Blumberg, uh, Chief Executive Officer of Health Plus Management. B as in boy, L U M B E R G.
Is that our whole team? Do we have anyone else? Uh, we have Deena.
Yeah, good morning, everyone. My name is Deena Ragab, R A G A B, and I'm the Head of Strategy and Growth at Health Plus Management.
Anyone else from, you see anyone else on the, on the screen, Walter?
Danielle Beltran.
Good morning. My name is Danielle Beltran, B as in boy, E L T R A N. I'm the V P of Client Services for Health Plus Management.
Okay, I'm just gonna remind those two last, um, those last two people who identified themselves. Uh, to the extent possible, when you are testifying, we do ask that you go on camera, um, if you are, if you have that capability.
Walter, anyone else?
No, that's it.
Okay.
Okay, everybody. I'm going to ask that you raise your right hand. I'm going to assume that we are all doing this, as I cannot see quite all of you at the same time. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm that the testimony you're about to provide and the, or the prefiled testimony that you have previously provided, shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon a penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Okay, uh, if we can get an I do from the Elaine office, which is currently on mute?
Yes, we do.
I do, I do.
Thank you. And then, uh, Deena, who is also on mute, and Danielle, who are on mute, if you could unmute yourselves just to say I do.
I do.
I do.
All right, thank you. All right, and at this point, I'm going to make note that I've seen everybody say that they do, uh, that they uh, swear that they have provided correct testimony. All right. Just wanna remind you that when you give testimony, to make sure that you state your full name and adopt any written testimony that you have submitted on the record prior to testifying today. The applicant may now, uh, the applicants may now proceed with their testimony. I ask all witnesses to define any acronyms that you use for the benefit of the public and the clarity of the record. All right. Attorney Karenante, you can go ahead with your testimony or with your applicant's testimony.
Sure. Uh, introducing, uh, Walter Lestrange, uh, Chief Operating Officer for Health Plus Management. Uh, Walter, uh, all yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Hearing Officer Novy and the O H S staff. Thank you for your time. We appreciate the work that you do. And as Vincent had, Vincenzo has said, my name is Walter Lestrange, L E S T R A N G E, and I am the Chief Operating Officer of Health Plus Management. In my prefiled testimony today, I will briefly highlight who Health Plus Management is, Health Plus Management and Health Plus Orthopedic Management LLC's experience and expertise, and why the physician owners of the A S C have chosen Health Plus to partner. As set forth in our application, Health Plus Orthopedic Management is a subsidiary of and wholly owned by, managed and managed by Health Plus Management. Health Plus Management is a service organization established in nineteen ninety-four. Health Plus collaborates with physicians and providers in the musculoskeletal field, as well as the ambulatory surgery centers. Through a comprehensive suite of services, including marketing, information technology, purchasing, human resources, compliance, revenue cycle management, finance accounting, and facility design and development, Health Plus supports providers in optimizing their operations. We currently serve over fifty locations and over eighty physicians with more than one million patient visits annually. Health Plus Orthopedic Management is, is managed and supported by Health Plus Management's senior leadership team, which has over twenty years' experience managing multiple ambulatory surgery centers across various states. Please see Exhibit O from my curriculum vitae and David McCabe, Health Plus Management's C, Chief Financial Officer, uh, for his C V as well. As reflected in our C Vs, I have served as the Chief Operating Officer of NuVance Health Medical Practice, which included the development of the ambulatory surgery, surgery strategy for their health system. I served as the Chief Operating Officer and Executive Vice President of Pro Health, which included the management of two ambulatory surgery centers. I also served as the Vice President and of Surgical Services for Staten Island University Hospital, North Shore L I J Health System, which included providing executive leadership to the Surgical Division of Staten Island University Hospital, including twenty-two operating rooms, an ambulatory surgery center, the Department of Anesthesia, all surgical subspecialty departments, their surgical residency program and fellowships, the surgical faculty practice, and the central sterile processing department. And finally, I served as the Executive Director of United Medical Surgical P C, which included overseeing and coordinating, coordinating the construction of a new ambulatory surgery center and a new cosmetic center. As for Mr. McCabe, he has served as the Chief Financial Officer for National Spine and Pain Centers, wherein he was responsible for the financial and operational management for seventeen ambulatory surgery centers, including the development of three certificate of need from approval to full operational status. Collectively, H P O M and H P M have three decades of experiencing managing physician practices across New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut, and supporting their daily operations, enabling physicians to focus on patient care. Throughout its tenure, Health Plus has consistently delivered exceptional support to physicians, empowering healthcare providers to concentrate on patient care while facilitating their growth through capital infusion and extensive management expertise. In this present application, Health Plus and Health Plus Orthopedic Management are poised to extend this wealth of expertise and support to the A S C so it can remain a viable alternative to hospital-based surgery by providing that same level of excellence in management and patient satisfaction to this specialized and complementary healthcare setting. As reflected in the table we submitted with my prefiled testimony, with all the practices, locations we partner with and manage, Health Plus has a long and established track record that showcases long-term commitment to healthcare providers that it serves. Health Plus Management and Health, Health Plus Management established Health Plus Orthopedic Management in two thousand and twenty-two in order to provide administrative managerial, management services to the physician practice known as Somers Orthopedic Surgery and Sports Medicine Group, which is co-located at the Ambulatory Surgery Center. After familiarizing themselves with Health Plus's management history for client services and our track record for administrative support, the physician owners experienced, experienced their firsthand the relationship and with Health Plus, and they were eager to partner with Health Plus Management. The reasons for the physician owners chose as a partner for their A S C stems from a number of reasons, a number of reasons. One, though, from their capital needs and the complexity of a high, of, uh, operating in a highly complex healthcare environment today. As an example, Medicare has recently approved a number of musculoskeletal procedures that are, should be performed in lower-cost ambulatory surgery settings. Giving the significance of the orthopedic surgeons who practice in the A S C, the physician owners chose Health Plus as their partner. Of importance to note, the rising cost in healthcare and the increased demand for total joint surgery, which, you know, we offer that less expensive alternative to providing this care in a, in a very complex, low-cost setting. We believe that the A S C is the first in Connecticut to pioneer overnight beds to expand the opportunity to accommodate a larger patient population. And Health Plus Orthopedic Management is facilitating expansion of these cost savings by providing capital for equipment, both robotic and surgical instruments and tools, and we hope to expand hours to a fifth day. And in addition, and finally, is to expand the A S C certi- certification as a center of excellence in joint replacement through the Joint Commission accreditation. In closing, I'd like to stress and highlight the following. Health Plus Orthopedic Management already owns forty percent of the A S C and is already managing the A S C. This proposal involves the transfer of an additional seventeen point seven percent from the existing owners of the A S C to Health Plus. Moreover, no physician owner is selling all or his or her ownership interest in the A S C, and each such owner will remain a member and owner of the A S C. As stated in the application, the physician owners will continue to be solely responsible for all of the medical and clinical decision-making in the A S C. Health Plus will maintain A S C's provider as a Medicaid provider. Nothing will change. Health Plus has never had one of their management services agreements terminated by a healthcare provider, facility, or practice, reflecting the values such practices and providers and facilities place on the contributions and benefits of Health Plus to their operations. The quality of care at the A S C is utmost importance to Health Plus Orthopedic Management. As such, we track many clinical quality indicators every quarter, including normal thermia, antibiotic timing, post-operative infections, deep venous vein thrombosis, pulmonary embolism, hospital transfers, falls, wrong-sided surgeries, wrong-sided blocks, adverse events, hand washing, needle sticks, and patient satisfaction surveys. I'm very proud to report that since Health Plus Orthopedic Management's involvement, involvement with the A S C, including the first two quarters of two thousand and twenty-four, in which we performed one thousand three hundred and eighty-seven cases, our quality scores have been the highest in the history of the A S C. Finally, Health Plus Management does not have any history of buying and selling their interest in any practice or healthcare facility. In fact, Health Plus has never bought and then resold any interest in any healthcare provider. As you can see from the list, we've been managing some practices since two thousand and five. I adopt this prefiled testimony as my own, Walter Lestrange.
All right. Attorney Karenante, anyone else that you would like to have, uh, for testimony or that?
Uh, no, Hearing Officer Novy. Uh, just Walter was our pre, the prefile that we filed with the, with O H S. Um, and we're, but we have a team here to answer any and all of O H S's, uh, questions.
Do you have any questions you would like to ask of your own witness before we begin with our questions?
No, Hearing Officer Novy, I do not.
Okay, all right. So at this point, um, I am going to start with my questions that I, I have pre, um, I have pre-written. We will then take, um, we'll take a break maybe, uh, depending on how quickly I go through the list, about halfway through or towards the end. Um, and then that way we can make sure we have all of our questions done. Um, but I'm going to start, and it, uh, I'd just like to remind, uh, all of the witnesses for the applicants that if you are going to answer a question, um, just restate your name and title at the beginning of your answer so that our stenographer can properly, um, attribute what you're saying to you. The first question is, um, was the decision to transfer ownership unanimous vote among the physicians?
Oh, before we start, sorry, I should have mentioned one thing. Um, Walter, um, and or I, but probably mostly Walter, we'll quarterback it and we'll figure out who the best person is to respond to your question or any O H S question.
And that's fine. I expect that. Uh, I know there's a lot of people, um, but that, and that's why I asked them to re-identify themselves before speaking each time.
Got it. Got it. Sounds like a plan. I, I, Walter, I'm assuming that's you and or Dr. Buckholzer.
Um, so as the quarterback, I'm going to pass this one over to Dr. Buckholzer to answer. Thank you.
Our voice, our, our stuff is not great here. So can you, um, just repeat the question for us, please?
Was the decision to transfer ownership a unanimous vote among the physicians?
So, so the physicians met, uh, and unanimously voted to transfer, uh, that amount of ownership. We had sought a partner, uh, to try to help us, um, you know, build the, uh, you know, create a center where we can do more of the, uh, operations that we like to do. Um, but we needed some capital investment in order to do that, and the physicians felt that this was our best partner in order to do that.
And, um, you said that you needed, um, you wanted to do more, um, I, I'm sorry, I, I didn't quite write this down as well, that you were looking to do more, uh, in intense surgeries. Uh, what types of surgeries would those have been or would, that would have needed more capital?
So, so we, we're pretty much involved as one of the, you know, the first centers to do these overnight beds for total joint replacements. And, uh, we do a fair number of total joint replacements, probably as much or more than any center in Connecticut. Uh, we take care of a, a very large Medicare population. Um, and we are able to bring them in, do their surgery. Um, the healthier, younger ones were able to get home. Um, but the older ones, we can do in a very safe environment, keep them overnight and monitor them with, you know, two nurses overnight and the anesthesiologist that usually stays overnight or an intensivist, an M D. Intensivist. So we have a great center in order to help, you know, facilitate these- So we have a great center in order to help, you know, facilitate these expensive procedures and take them out of the hospital setting and do them for significant savings to Medicare in an outpatient environment. We've set up a great system to do that, but in order for us to grow, we need capital investment in new computers, robotics, which we just got a new robot that H P M has helped us purchase, opening up another day so we can expand our hours and be able to do even more surgeries, potentially opening up a Saturday to do surgeries, and recruiting new surgeons in order to facilitate that. So we feel it's great for the system in order for us to be able to do a great procedure, have great outcomes, and significant cost savings to the system. But we, as physicians, are really good at doing the surgical end of things and coordinating and making sure that the quality of care is as good as any place in the country. But from a business perspective, we just don't have the acumen, and that's why we've moved to H P. And like I said, unanimously, all the doctors that participate in ownership in the center are on board.
I would like to follow up with a question about the overnight beds. Those weren't mentioned in the original, in the original application, but they were in the prefiles. Can you please explain what the overnight, a little bit more about what the overnight beds are and how many there are? How they're used?
So when we initially set up this concept of building an outpatient center for joint replacement back in two thousand eighteen and nineteen, we went to the Health Department and told them that for us to be able to do a large population of patients and not the forty-year-olds or fifty-year-olds, but really to be able to dig into the cost savings for the Medicare population, we needed the ability to keep them overnight. So some patients with high blood pressure or diabetes or sleep apnea, some of the risk factors, we would be able to monitor them overnight and make sure that we provided a safer environment and the ability to be discharged home the next day. In order to do that, we had to go to the Department of Health in Connecticut, and we had to create an overnight bed situation for ambulatory surgery centers. So we were really the first center in Connecticut to develop that, to develop the guidelines and the protocols for that. You know, obviously, it took us a long time in order to get that approved, but we got it approved, and, you know, we've done several thousand joint replacements probably over the last seven years or so, six years, that we've been in business and have had tremendous success. Not would have not had any bad complications at all.
Yeah. How often would you say you use the overnight beds?
So I would pass that to Crystal.
Hi, my name is Crystal Hancock, and I'm the Director of Nursing. So we utilize overnight beds. We have three overnight beds, so we're able to have three patients overnight. And it is two nurses, three patients, along with intensivist or the anesthesiologist. And we use those beds probably anywhere between seven to nine times a month.
Now, is that for all three beds or just a single user?
So it really does depend. Sometimes we have three patients that stay overnight. Other nights, we will have two or one. So it kind of depends on, you know, the patient and if they feel comfortable going home.
Okay. Okay. The next question, we're going to go kind of back to talking about the plan. Why was a seventeen point seven percent purchase required for changes to the A S C?
Well, thank you for that question. I'm going to refer that one back to, well, I'll start with Dr. Buckholzer and then I'll tag on to his answer. Thank you.
So we, you know, again, we needed the ability to partner with someone that had some expertise, you know, which was more advanced than we currently had. And the doctors unanimously decided to sell half of their shares. And that's what we desired to do. We wanted to keep shares because we wanted to obviously control the clinical aspects of the surgery center and to be intimately involved in its growth. So all the doctors had agreed to a fifty percent sale. And then when we went to look for partners, Health Plus agreed to this percentage in order to move forwards, which the doctors felt very comfortable with.
I would like to. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. LaStrange, do you have follow-up or?
Yeah, just briefly. And it was partially, you know, a mathematical. How seventeen percent, it wasn't an arbitrary number. That's how, you know, the math worked out that allowed the physicians to give that percentage of their shares up.
I would like to direct you to exhibit C, the first set of completeness responses. And it is listed as Bates Page two hundred and eighty-nine.
Are you going to share that document? Should we get it on our own?
If you can get your own. I'm working off paper copies. I really like paper. So I am taking, I'm reading off paper. I'm writing notes on paper. So if I could just direct you guys to that one, you listed the benefits of this proposed transfer of ownership. My question is going to be, could the benefits in the proposed transfer of ownership have happened without the acquisition of the additional seventeen point seven percent?
I'll start off there. Thank you. That's a great question. So, you know, in order for us to justify our investment and then to continue to make capital investments, you know, it stands to reason that we would want an additional percentage ownership. So, you know, some of these devices that robot, for example, is a million dollars. We just put in four new surgical towers for three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So just as in part as a justification for these additional investments, you know, it stands to reason that we would want a larger percentage of the investment in the business. And once again, as I mentioned, you know, the surgeons always wanted to divest themselves of that much of it. So there's like two compelling complementary reasons why that occurred. Hopefully, that answers your question.
I'm sorry, I'm still writing. So if I don't look up, because I'm actually taking.
Pause.
All right.
And just as an aside, you know, we have plans to continue making capital investments. In fact, just last week, the anesthesia group asked us to purchase a new ultrasound probe, which will help them improve the quality of their nerve blocks. So I think the capital investments are ongoing, and it's just really sound business.
Do you have any studies or proof that you can point to that the acquisition of the seventeen point seven percent will affect the quality at the A S C and contain costs?
Well, I don't have any studies to say, but I could tell you definitively that the clinical control remains with the physicians. We are the administrative leadership. Clinical decision and quality control is managed by Dr. Buck, by Dr. Buck, Dr. Buckholzer, Eileen O'Brien, who's a registered nurse, and Crystal Hancock, registered nurses, who oversee all of our quality indicators. And we have no input on what those are, and there's no influence to change any of those.
How will H P O M improve costs as compared to the physicians having control over the A S C?
Well, I guess it's an indirect answer to that, in that we can open with our advanced, increased resources and capital. We hope to open an additional day, and we can invest into more equipment that will expand access to patients and expand services.
Now, will this, the additional day, will that require the current doctors working more? Or how, what will the additional day, will it bring on more people?
Yeah, so it's a great question. So when you think about the ambulatory surgery center, the ambulatory surgery center is a dependent variable. You know, we're the recipient of patients. It's the physicians drive who comes to the center. But if there's limited access, obviously, there's limited opportunity physicians to operate there. And if they have extra cases, they might then go to a hospital, which is a higher-cost setting. So by opening a fifth day, you know, we hope to, you know, provide that access to patients who prefer to come to the ambulatory surgery center and to the surgeons who prefer to be in the ambulatory center. It's, you know, you didn't ask this question, but I'll just share with you that it's a more efficient setting. Having someone like myself who's managed both inpatient, hospital operating rooms and ambulatory surgery centers, the efficiencies of ambulatory surgery center really are unmatched. And it's just a better setting for patients and families.
How will H P O M enhance the delivery of services to patients at the center?
Well, first off, I'd just like to start off by saying it's already an exceptional center. So improving on exceptional standards is difficult, but we will maintain that exceptional care. Our survey results and our patient quality outcomes are near perfect. And we do, while we are not a voting member of our medical advisory committee, but we do join those meetings and listen in and hear about the quality measures that are ongoing. As an aside, I'm a registered nurse as well. And I've been, you know, involved in the quality care of ambulatory surgery centers and O Rs in my career. This is an exceptional team, and we're just so thrilled to be partnering with them. And we don't expect any changes in quality. We'll maintain that exceptional quality.
Officer Novy, can I interject one thing?
Yes.
Can I ask Dr. Buckholzer or his team or Walter or anyone else how the capital investments that we've made or H P O M has made so far and/or plan to make? How has that improved or and/or will improve the quality of care at the surgery center? I don't know if that's Dr. Buckholzer's room or Walter.
I can say a few things. My name is Eileen O'Brien, the Administrator at Orthopedic and Specialty Surgery Center. I can tell you that Health Plus has allowed us to purchase new equipment, which gives us better outcomes. Just the ultrasound is a state-of-the-art ultrasound machine that gives us access to giving better or very good nerve blocks for these total joint patients to go home, to have pain control. They've allowed us to send two of our managers on to get higher management degrees, which will help improve our process. We've also been able to send two of our O R nurses to an operating room educational seminars, so that they are, they'll be able to give better patient care. The new robot has allowed us to perform surgeries in some patients that may have not been able to be done here. Some people have nickel allergies. So those patients were not, robotic surgery may have not been an option for them, but with this new robot, it is an option. And then we've also been able to acquire four new towers, which are for their orthopedic or arthroscopic procedures. That, before that, we had only three towers, so now we have four towers and we could run all four operating rooms simultaneously, being able to, giving us more options to fill those rooms.
In addition, we, you know, by having this, you know, state-of-the-art equipment, we've upgraded our arthroscopic equipment, got another robot, this is our third robot. We've recruited additional physicians that would come to work at the center that ordinarily may not come because of the type of technology that we do have. And having really the state-of-the-art technology allows us to do the best work possible for our patients. And obviously, it's very attractive to patients, you know, to come to a center where we don't just try to, you know, cut corners and do things quickly and less expensively. We really do things state-of-the-art, and cost is obviously an object for all the stuff that we do, but it's really in the background where the quality of care is the number one thing that we have done from day one that we continue to do. And just to add to that, you know, we don't have, we as physicians just don't have the ability to analyze, like, you know, you're doing a hundred of these, you know, this gauze pad you use is ten cents cheaper from this other company, and you'll save three dollars by doing this, and you multiply it by twenty, and you multiply it by a hundred, and next thing you know, you're saving significant money and not at all cutting quality or like that. But we don't have the ability to analyze any of that data. And there's so much data out there, and, you know, this insurance company gives you a dollar, this insurance company gives you two dollars. You know, it's just, it's just so much information out there that we can't process and we can't optimize, you know, so that we can continue to be like state-of-the-art, be able to purchase really good equipment, to be able to, you know, have fun in the operating room, do great work. You have the most amazing patient satisfaction of any place I've ever worked. And it's because, you know, we have the tools as physicians and surgeons, but we don't have the running of the business end of things where we really need good help so we can do what we want to do. And H P has allowed us to do exactly what we want to do. I mean, this new robot was a million dollars. Trust me, from an economic point of view, trying to make money, it's not going to make you more money. It'll probably make you less money, but we'll be able to do more patients. We'll have a better population of patients. And we'll continue to provide the services to like the Medicare population, which, you know, if you look at the projection over the next ten years, you know, the number of joint replacements is going to dramatically increase. There's, it's just, you can't do it in the hospital. It's too expensive. So we have to move these procedures to these centers where we can do them more cost-effectively, higher quality of care. You know, we don't have, you know, infections that come into our center. We only make sure we take care of healthy people that don't have infections, so our infection rates are as low as they can be anywhere around the country. You know, we just have a great place, and we just want to grow it.
I do have a question, a follow-up question, and this is based off my lack of knowledge. What is a tower, and can you explain why four of them are very important? Sorry.
So we do what's called arthroscopic surgery, which is, we put a telescope in someone's shoulder, their knee. Urologists put telescopes inside the bladder, and we are a multi-specialty center. We have ear, nose, and throat surgeons that do things as well. The technology has grown dramatically. You know, it's almost like buying a new computer where it's outdated in five years. So these towers consist of all the operating room equipment, including the video equipment, which is these high-definition four K monitors, these telescopes that cost a billion dollars a piece, but give you these beautiful pictures, these instruments we put inside these small joints that are specially made, you know, millimeter, two-millimeter, three-millimeter sizes, special motorized shavers that have vacuums that sub-tissue out when they, when somebody has a torn meniscus or a torn cartilage or need a rotator cuff repair. So our equipment was great four or five years ago, but believe it or not, it's outdated. And for us to stay on top of the game, we need a new equipment. A tower is good for an operating room. Ideally, we have four operating rooms, so if we have four towers, it will increase our efficiency. Because moving a tower from one room to another is a process that takes time and it decreases the efficiency. So having four of these state-of-the-art towers, one in each room, allow us really to do great work, and especially because it's so much better than the old stuff we had. And without H P, we couldn't do that.
Thank you for your answer. I learned something new every hearing, and now I know what a tower is. Thank you. So I'm gonna just, staying with completeness letter one. On page two eighty-two, Bates Page two eighty-two of the completeness letter response, you answer, "There will be no disruption in the continuity of day-to-day management services at the A S C as a result of this proposal." However, on page two eighty-nine, it says, "H P O M will now have greater decision-making responsibility and authority with respect to," and in brackets, "operational efficiencies, days and hours of operation, recruiting new providers, and upgrading technology." Can you kind of explain the juxtaposition of those two statements?
Sure. Thank you. So I think we've already, I think, addressed the clinical aspect of that, so I'll talk about more about the business analytics perspective. So, and a couple of other things we've recently done in respect to revenue cycle and the electronic health record that's in the facility and the analytics. So we've just recently put a whole new system in place. So I think we went live July first.
Can I ask you what system you've put in and just kind of tell us a little bit about that E H R?
Yeah, it's called C I S, and Eileen helped me with the acronym, Surgical Information System. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's it. So that allows us to do a host of analytics that we really, prior to this, were not capable of doing. So things you like to manage in terms of your efficiency of your O R, you'd like to know. And once again, I'm sorry to give you this information, but I think you like learning new things. So one of the metrics that we look at is operating room turnover and operating room utilization. So one of the metrics that we look at is um, operating room turnover and operating room utilization. So with these new systems, we're now loading a whole host of new data points that we previously didn't look at and measure. So going forward, we only went live July for one, but by Q four of this year, we'll have a really good sufficient database. That we can start to analyze, not just the OR efficiency and OR utilization, but we're also adding something called. These preference cards. So Dr. Buckholzer has a certain menu of items he likes to use in his operating room. But Dr. Smith and Dr. Jones have a different preference card. All of that data is now with the help of the team you see in the room, is being fed into this new system. So we'll then be able to start analyzing not just uh, efficiency but cost. And then we'll give that information to the medical advisory committee and they can look at where we're seeing. Um, perhaps some unnecessary costs and then they make the justification around the clinical decision-making, whether or not. You know, it's justified or not. We just provide the information in, in a setting that, that was an exceptionally well-run. But they were lacking some good data.
And you, can you address um, how H P O M will have greater managerial, and I think you may have already alluded to this. Greater managerial administrative authority at the center after the acquisition?
Yeah, so um, managerial authority, so things that we would be managing are really, once again, those operational things, non-clinical. So do they need a new air conditioning unit on the roof? How's the revenue cycle being managed? Um, does the, you know, do we need to replace equipment, which we've sort of been down that road? But there's, you know, purchasing opportunities. So it's everything operational. We might actually do some workflow. Analysis for patient experience, not necessarily clinical, but what are those patient experiences? We actually spent some time also in marketing, which we haven't highlighted yet. So we will definitely do some marketing, which will highlight, you know, the great facility that we have. And so they historically probably haven't done anything in the social media world and we'll be doing that as well and upgrading their website. And, you know, so it's really everything you can imagine on that operational side of the house, of part of the house, we'll be looking at.
Um, and then what, if you, can you talk a little bit about what the mission of H P O M as a management company is? And how that correlates and connects to the A S C?
Thank you so much. So on that, I'd like to, you know, I'd reintroduce our chief executive officer Stuart Blumberg. And maybe uh, Stu would like to speak to the history and um, mission of Health Plus.
Sure. Thank you, Walter. Stuart Blumberg, CEO of Health Plus Management. Uh, I may not have said it up top, but I'm also the founder of the company, so we've been providing services and partnering with physicians. For now over thirty years, I think July is actually our thirty-year anniversary. The uh, the longevity of our relationships with the physician practices that you saw in our exhibit. Really speak to what our vision and mission is, which is to help physicians excel and succeed in private practice. Enjoy what they're doing, have an alternative to hospital employment. Um, and keep, you know, the patients as happy as could be with tremendous outcomes. So our philosophy is to partner with best-in-class physicians like Dr. Buck, Dr. Buckholzer and the Somers Group. And OSS C as our first partnership in a uh, surgery center. And coming into the surgery center, I should say, you know, we are well aware of the complexities of the surgery center, right? And having Walter and Dave and others on the Health Plus team, um, we needed to make sure that we were prepared and ready. To deliver the same results that we've done historically for physician practices. You know, so we, of course, recognize the regulatory complexities, the uh, operational complexities, the financial management. That Dr. Buckholzer has talked about. So we came in very prepared. And the work that we do for the surgery center really does align very closely with what we have done for thirty years. Again, which is invest in these practices so that they could be here for the long term. And that the patients can rely on the practice to be there when they need them, um, and to provide outstanding service.
All right, now I'm going to stick with you for a little bit, um.
Sure.
Who will uh, who will the CFO report to after acquisition? And can you provide a org, a org chart um, as a late file?
Sure. And the CFO of Health Plus, you, right, Dave McCabe?
Well, is there a CFO of the actual A S C at the moment?
Dave, do you want to talk a bit about the uh, hierarchy?
Sure, Dave McCabe, CFO for Health Plus Management. The actual site itself, the A S C, OSS C does not have an individual one hundred percent dedicated chief financial officer. Um, there is a financial person there, she's in the room, Lauren has already introduced herself. I am the CFO, um, Lauren provides information up to me, which I provide to Stu as a direct report of Stu.
Can we get an org chart of how this will be laid out, um, submitted as a late file? Of how the, how the um, interplay between H P O M and uh, the Orthopedic Specialty Center?
Yeah, absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Okay, so we'll make that late file one. And then um, sticking on with that, I would like to ask if you could please describe. Um, and provide before and after quality measures from previous acquisitions or partial acquisitions. I know you mentioned that this is a service you have been providing, so any statistics that you have on um, improvements that have been made. Um, or quality measures from before you purchased an A S C to after the uh, purchase. So that we can see those and that would be, I'd request that as late filed too.
Right, so um, I'll just, I'm gonna, I'm going to pass this one to Crystal. Um, we've been with the group since October, I guess. So it might be a little early to do comparative data, only to say that the outcomes at this point, and Crystal can speak to them, have really been.
Well, I'm looking more for other uh, um, you know, A S Cs that you have partnered with. I know there was a, a list and it was in your profile as well. Um.
Let me, can I interject, Officer?
Yes.
H P O M does not have any ownership or management uh, with prior A S Cs. This is the first A S C. Um, what we were highlighting before, and it's maybe a little nuanced, and I apologize for the lack of clarity. What we were stressing there is the individuals that are now managing this A S C. Have a lot of experience in their prior lives uh, with management and participation or partnering with A S Cs. So Walters' prior um, employment stops, Pro Health, NuVance. Um, and also Mr. McCabe, they all have a lot of experience personally with A S Cs. But this company, H P M, H P O M, this is their first um, management or partnership with an A S C. So we do not have any prior data with, with, with A S Cs.
Okay.
Just want to be, just want to be clear.
Twenty-one facilities that were listed on um, on Mr. LaStrange's testimony, those are, those are not A S Cs.
Right, physician practices.
Physician practices, okay, gotcha. I see a lot of them are rehab type. I see that now, okay. Um, but if you do have any data about what your improvements have been doing, I know it's only been um, since October. Any um, any information that you would have on the improvements or any. Preliminary review that you've done of the facility, that would be appreciated as late filed too.
Got it, okay.
Um, and then after uh, I, we're, and I'm now gonna, I'm gonna shift a little bit again. To um, questions about staffing. Um, do you expect there to be a change in the uh, in the non-doctor staffing? I know you've talked about hopefully having more doctors come on for the new days that you're open. Um, but can you talk about the level of non-doctor staffing?
Sure, there'd be no expectation that we would eliminate any positions. In fact, as we go to a fifth day, we would be actually increase the staffing.
And um, where would you be looking to increase that staffing? Do you, do you have any idea? Would it be nurses? Would it be front desk people, things like?
Eileen, Eileen, would you like to take that, please?
Sure, my name is Eileen O'Brien. Um, we would have to in- increase staffing in all areas. So that would be in the pre and post-op areas, uh, the operating room, maybe sterile processing. And um, in the office.
Um, and then a question with that is, um. Would you be keeping with the same types of staff you have previously hired? For instance, instead of going from an RN to an LPN, or would you be looking to?
We would be keeping um, our same standards. Uh, we would hire registered nurses. Um, certified surgical techs, certified sterile processing techs, the same standards that we hold right now.
And who would be doing the hiring at that time?
Um, that would, it's a collaborative effort uh, between the Director of Nursing, Crystal Hancock, and Louis Peralta and Lauren Mealy.
Okay, so it would be handled in-house, not through H P O M, okay. What type of uh, input would H P O M have into, for instance, staffing? Um, or the, I mean, I know besides um, hiring of doc- doctors, would there, would they be involved in the day-to-day H R? Or?
So it's a great, great question. So regarding um, recruitment, if we take that for head new staff. So our human resource department at Health Plus, which support Eileen's team in recruiting new people. So we would lead on, you know, posting ads, writing the ads for, for indeed dot com or wherever we go. And that would be managed, that would be the support we would provide. They'd make the decision on the actual personnel. But we would support their functions.
Great, I'm going to now shift gears a bit again. To uh, I have a few questions about the board. Um, you would be uh, as, as a result of the acquisition of the seventeen point seven percent. What qualifications would be required to be appointed to the board after H P O M gets the additional, has, will now have four seats?
So um, the addition to the board would be people from our, our C-suite. So it would be uh, David McCabe and possibly Stuart Blumberg, and that would be, you know. That would probably be the extent of board management.
And then um, you had mentioned that there were some committee, or um, it had been mentioned that there are some committees in this facility. Um, what committees exist?
Eileen, would you like to manage that, please?
This is Eileen O'Brien. Um, we have a quality um, committee. We have a medical advisory committee, um, we have a peer review committee.
Infection.
Infection control, which also into the quality.
Okay, um, how are people appointed to these committees?
Um, they are appointed, um, they're identified through the um, management um, team. And then we appoint them um, every year, so they get voted on every January.
All right, hold on one second, I'm still just right. Uh, will there be any changes to these committees after the acquisition?
I don't see any changes now.
All right, um. My last few questions are about um, uh, patients. Um, and the costs for patient care. Um, please describe and provide the charity care appeal information. I know you talked about that there was a process, but I didn't see that process. Is that possible as a late file?
Yes.
I'll make that late file three, um, but can you explain what happens when, um, during the hearing? Or right now about what happens if somebody loses a charity, a request for charity care?
So we would go through an appeals process, um, it's submitted within thirty days or free, um, receiving the initial charity care determination. Um, we would meet as a, the medical um, advisory committee. Um, to, to review uh, the appeal. Um, it's based upon, you know. We would do the appeal outcome and then they can do a secondary uh, appeal.
And how many of these do you, would you say you, you, you deal with in uh, a year or a six-month period?
Um, we really, a handful, yeah.
Um, for patients who are uninsured, how are the out-of-patient uh, out-of-pocket costs handled?
We do have a schedule. Do you want to speak to that, Eileen, about the?
Yes, um, so if they don't have insurance, we speak with them beforehand. And we have a fee schedule based off of uh, the current prices of Medicare. Um, so we would just get a procedure code and give them an estimate for their, for their procedure, what it would cost out of pocket.
You did say you have a schedule. Can I ask for that to be submitted as late file four?
Yes.
Right, um, will the process change about um, uninsured patients um, out-of-pocket costs? After the acquisition?
No, we, and in fact, the facility has not increased their fees since inception, which is six years ago. And we have no plans to increase fees going forward.
Okay, um, who reports patient debt to debt collectors?
That would be Lauren, I guess, no?
It is this office.
Yeah.
The onsite one, okay.
Yeah.
Will there be any changes to the way patient debt is handled after H P O M uh, makes the acquisition?
No.
Um, who will negotiate prices for patients after the seventeen point seven percent acquisition?
Lauren.
It will still remain the same.
Yeah.
Okay. And will you uh, uh, Lauren, will you also be um, negotiating contracts with payers?
I'll, I'll take that one. So we, we actually, um, to negotiate contracts with payers, that's where something that helps plus would help with. So we've actually engaged with a third party to act as a consultant to help us with that. So just in the world of healthcare, you know, physicians and facilities are price takers, we don't set a price. You know, the payers set the price, we just take whatever they pay. But we can um, negotiate hopefully for better payments based on wage inflation. Based on cost savings to the payer, and those are the type of strategies we use to, to bring better wages, or better fair rates to the facility. But that has not, has happened as of yet, so the rates have been the same since inception.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to go back to, for one last time, and I'm sorry I jumped around on this question. Um, this last question is about complex uh, spinal cases. Um, and I just would like to know a little bit more about that. Says that you'll be adding more complex spinal cases, has there been an increased need for these surgeries? And um, if so, could you provide testimony, or sorry, provide um, data on your complex spinal cases? And what you're hoping to do with providing those services?
Sure, I'll, I'll start it off and then I'll pass the ball around. So um, just like with the same as total joints, it's been demonstrated that you can do a lot of these high-cost cases. In an ambulatory setting. So to that extent, you know, we've made that investment to get the instrumentation required to do those cases. So we've actually recently re- recruited in the orthopedic group, a new um, spine surgeon. Who completed his fellowship at the University of Texas, who has expertise in these minimally invasive outpatient surgical procedures. So he's now part of the group. In addition, we just recruited another neurosurgeon who does spine cases to support him. Um, as a senior leader in that group. So two new spine surgeons within the last year. Um, in the group, and we'll be bringing those cases, which are now Medicare, many of them are Medicare required that you, unless there's comorbidity. And reasons not to do them in ambulatory setting, Medicare prefers that they're done in these settings. Dr. Buckholzer, anything to add, or did I get it all?
Yeah, I think, I think you kind of touched on it, and I think that exactly that, that we have um, you know, recruited physicians to perform procedures. That um, are minimally invasive, where you put a telescope in and you can remove a herniated disc. Or you can take care of a, a spine issue um, with very sophisticated equipment. That beforehand, you know, just the hospital's own, we, we were not able to purchase those, what, we weren't able to afford that equipment, now we can. And we can move a lot of these um, not bigger operations in the sense more dangerous operation. But more complex operations requiring very expensive equipment into a surgery center where we can do it for a significant cost savings. Um, so now we have the physicians to do, we just, you know, now we have the equipment and we'd like to get that up and running as well, to provide that service.
All right, thank you. Um, and then one last late file, I would like to ask if you could provide a case mix index. About what case? About what cases the ASC currently sees versus what it expects to see if the proposal is approved?
Great, great question.
And that would be, we just, sorry, my notes are all over the place. That would be late pile five.
Yep.
Okay. So that is the end of my questions. I think at this time, it would be a good time to take a fifteen-minute break. So actually, let's make it a twenty-minute break since we have gone for, for quite a while. We got a lot done. If we could meet back here, we'll call it slightly under twenty minutes. If we can meet back here at ten thirty, I would like to ask, remind everybody that we will, the hearing will remain on. So if you could please mute yourself and turn off your camera so that we cannot still see you. I will see if we can be back here at ten thirty for the remaining hearing. Thank you, everybody, and I'll see you in eighteen minutes. Thank you. All right. Good morning, everybody. It is now ten thirty AM, as you were just informed by the Zoom voice. We are recording this hearing, and by remaining in this hearing, you consent to being recorded. If you revoke that, that consent, right, if you would like to revoke that consent, please exit the hearing at this time. Okay, so I will continue. I did come up with a few questions. After we went on break, I will ask some questions. I know my, one of our analysts has two questions for you. And then we will go ahead and allow the applicant's attorney to ask any questions that he has. My first question is, are there any services that the ASC plans to discontinue after the acquisition?
No.
Well, will HPOM have any input into which services are added or removed after the acquisition?
Well, we won't be removing any. In terms of adding, the only input we would have would be to provide the anal, the analysis of the value add of doing certain procedures. They would decide if the clinical capabilities exist. So for example, we won't deliver babies there because we don't have the clinical capability. They would make those decisions, though.
Then my last question is, does the ASC currently have a corporate practice of medicines policies and protections in place?
I would have to defer to either Deena, Vin, or Eileen.
Sure. Let me just chime in to clarify, Walter, can you, and this might be a Dr. Bull Culture question. Can you, can you go, Dr. Bull Culture, can, can you guys speak to the Medical Advisory Committee, what we want to focus here? Tell Hearing Officer Novy and OHS staff is, you know, we're involved in administrative and business dealings, and all of the clinical decision-making is done by the, by the clinical team. I'm, I'm your attorney. I can't actually testify to that fact. So I would just like, just like the Dr. Bull Culture's team or Walter to, to, if that's true, to testify and speak to that. Where ju- just, if I'm, if I'm hearing Officer Novy correctly, should, we would like to hear about, you know, who's involved in the clinical decision-making at the ASC.
So I think the, the clinical decision-making is by this Medical Advisory Committee, which is, which consists of just clinical people. There's no business people in there. It's myself, it's Eileen, and it's Louis and Crystal, and, and Dr. Diana, who's the head of anesthesia for the Surgery Center. And it's the, it's the five of us that make all the clinical decisions in regards to how the Surgery Center functions. It's the five of us that look at all the quality measures and review them. It's the five of us that look at, you know, when the, when the pharmacy comes in to check on us and make sure that we're doing everything correctly. It's the five of us, and you know, Eileen leads the charge because she's there every day of the week where I'm not. So, you know, she can speak to it a little bit more in detail.
So. Not really, what, so.
Do you have a policy? Let's start with, we'll break it down. Do you currently have a policy on the corporate practice of medicine?
On the corporate practice of medicine, we have a policy on our surgical services. We have a, a policy on the type of patients that we will and cannot accept based on their medical conditions. We have policies on, you know, pre-admission quality measures as far as like, you know, labs, EKGs, clearances that are needed to make sure the patient's safe here.
Do you have any, do you plan to implement any policies to account for the enhanced involvement of non-physicians in the ASC?
No.
Okay.
And if I could just add from Stu Blumberg, Health Plus, that we just have a longstanding history of all of our agreements of having sensitivity to the corporate practice of medicine. So for myself throughout the whole team of Health Plus, as you've heard Walter testify, you know, we, we have a very, you know, strong checks and balances to not get involved in anything that has to do with corporate practice of medicine. You know, we, our history is in New York, which is a highly regulated state. So we're very familiar with it, and I, and to the, to the question, I'll defer about the policy written to others on the team, but I can say the spirit of what you've heard throughout the testimony today is Health, Health Plus functions as a company that does not get involved in anything that has to do with medical decision-making. We trust that our partners are going to do right by their patients and for the practice and the ASC.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm now going to turn it over to Ms. Tomczyk. She has some additional questions. She will be asked.
Good morning. I do have a couple of follow-up questions to some things that were brought up previously. You had mentioned that you will, HPOM will be supporting with ads and that sort of thing as far as the hiring process goes. Will you be filtering through those applications, or what would that look like?
Yeah, our, our human resource department are, you know, experts in recruitment. We have, as we testified earlier, we have many other businesses that we partner with. So we do this pretty well, and then we'll filter through, do some background checks, and then give applicants to Eileen's team for that. You know, so we basically do the screening process for them.
Right, okay. And then, not related, but a different question. Now, you had also mentioned that Health Plus purchased some new towers, some very expensive equipment. And this is why you only own the forty percent? So what exactly will be kind of changing if, if the application's approved? If it's not approved, will you kind of have like a budget that they have to stick to?
That's a good question. So we've made these investments in good faith. We believe they're necessary to run the business efficiently. The additional seventeen percent to us helps us justify those. We, we, we're making those investments. So it's not an either-or. But, you know, to justify our investment, we think it's, you know, appropriate that we have a larger ownership stake in that. But we've, you know, we've already made those investments.
Correct.
So regardless of the outcome, we're all in.
All right. Thank you. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and allow the applicant's attorney, Mr., our attorney Karen Ante, to go ahead and ask any questions that he would like to ask of his witnesses.
Sure. We, we don't have any additional questions. The only, the only thing I want to add, just so we, we get some, some clarity, ask questions with, was with respect to, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with respect to the corporate practice of medicine and that, you know, we, you know, the, the corporation itself does not practice medicine. It, it's just the doctors that practice medicine or our clinical care providers. And so I just wanted to ask Eileen or Dr. Bull Culture's team, do we have any, does the Medical Advisory Committee, does, does, does it have any policies itself? I just wanted to make clear one point.
Policies in like patient selection or?
No, as to the structure, the membership, anything with respect to the policies. Or, or maybe just confirm right now who those, who those members are. Again, I, I feel like we, I think we stated it, but, you know, again, the corporation itself, you know, HPOM does not practice medicine. I just want to make it clear that only, you know, it's only clinical, only clinical providers are on that committee, correct?
Correct.
And Dr. Bull Culture, a- as you've been involved with the facility, have you ever seen HPOM, you know, interfere with any of your or your partner's, you know, clinical decisions?
No, we, we have, we have complete, you know, separation between the, the business end of things and the practice of medicine. And I think in all our bylaws and all our corporate documentation, I think that was set up that way so that we would be autonomous of anybody that's not clinical, that's not part of the clinical team to be involved in this medical executive committee, advisory committee, excuse me. So, so we have never been asked or, or questioned about anything that we decide to do, you know, and, and it's done by the committee, and then we go in front of all the docs. And, you know, we vote on a lot of things and make sure that everybody's in agreement. And we've really had no issues in the five, six years we've been open in that regard. And certainly over the last year, working with, you know, Health Plus, there has never been a single time that anybody said a word about anything clinical. You know, everything has been separated with the business aspect of things, a total different issue.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I have for my own witnesses. Hearing Officer Novy, I do have a question for you at the, I just want to clarify all the late files, but we, of course, we can do that, we could do that at the end.
Usually I do. I write out, right around the time you'll give a closing statement, I will talk to you about a late file, what you would need to get those exhibits in per timeframe. So if you want to use the break to maybe figure out what would be enough time for you to get them in, you can suggest that to me after public comment. Because we want to make sure that you have enough time to gather all the information needed. And before we take a break, before public comment, I would just like to state for everybody who is listening that public comment is open. You can sign up right now via our chat feature. And Ms. Greer will be here to help you and put a list together of people that would like to speak. If you would like to submit written comments and you don't want to speak today, that can be submitted to concomment@ct.gov. Again, that's C-O-N-C-O-M-M-E-N-T at ct.gov. And we will be taking written comments for seven days after the hearing, after the end of this hearing, which would put us through to August sixth. So you would have until August sixth to submit a written comment, should you choose. At this time, we'll take a break. We'll come back at eleven thirty. Any public comment that we have will be heard during that time. Then we'll go to closing statements from the applicant. And we will assign a late file date. We'll go over what's due for late files. We'll do a late file date for that, and then close the hearing. Thank you, everybody, and I will see you at eleven thirty.
Thank you. Thank you.
Eleven thirty. As you were just informed by the Zoom, by the Zoom voice, we are recording this hearing. And it will, you're remaining in this hearing means you consent to being recorded. If you would like to revoke that, that your consent to be recorded, please exit the hearing at this time. All right. At this point, I'm going to quickly ask if we have had any sign-ups for a, for public speaking. Ms. Greer, have we had anyone sign up? Leslie?
Would she be OHS, HSP?
Yes. It, it's Leslie. I don't know if you have your mic up or if you could just send a chat. Okay, Leslie, are you with us? Oh, no public comments. I see a chat. Okay. So at this time, instead of going through the entire public comment section, I will just say, if anybody is listening to this and would like to, doesn't feel like speaking today, but would like to submit written comments, you can submit written comments to us for up to seven days after this hearing, which will run through August sixth at concomment@ct.gov. Again, that is concomment@ct.gov. And we can take those comments for a week. I would like to thank everybody who has joined us again. Since we are not having any public comments, we will go to the late file submissions. Do you, do you know when you would be able to have the, actually, let's read through a list of the late files. I will have, again, Ms. Tomczyk read through a list of the late file requests, and then I'll ask you, Attorney Karenati, what you would like to have for a due date for those.
Sure.
The first one I have, I have five total. The first one is submit an organizational chart reflecting the changes of this proposal. Two is provide.
Sorry, could I, do I want to wait for my questions for each one or all, after you read all five? What, what do you prefer, Ms. Tomczyk?
Um, Alicia, do you want to?
Um, do you, yeah, let's, let's take the questions at this. I mean, do you have questions about each one that we're requesting or?
No, no, it just, I just had a question on the first one, so I didn't know.
Oh, go ahead. Right now, then, we'll take that.
Okay, sure. Sorry for the rude interruption, Nicole. I just wanted to stop you if, if, if I was supposed to ask questions. I just wanted to make sure that the, the way I wrote it down is you wanted a personnel org chart of how the, on the financial side of how the ASC reports up to HPOM. That, that's what I, that's what I wrote down, and so I was just confused on that first late file about, you know, the organizational chart with respect to the proposal. So I just want to make sure we get you exactly what you need with the late file number one.
I think it was a full org chart of what the chart, of what the organization is going to look like as well.
And, and we're talking about personnel, correct?
Yes. I mean, we can, I mean, we don't have to include, obviously, the, well, we should, yeah, we'll include personnel, all, all personnel on that org chart.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It's, it's an individual org chart. It's not an entity org chart. It's just a personnel org chart, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, it's just one.
And then just also let us know who the person is at the top who reports out HPOM as well. If there's like, I, I know, for instance, we were talking about it, and they said, well, the, the financial person in-house reports to HPOM. You can just give us a, this person would report information about financials to HPOM, this person.
Okay, so it's, it's one org chart that reflects what will happen if and when this proposal is approved, and its name, title, and who that person reports to.
Yes.
Would that be fair?
That's fair, yes.
Okay. All right. Sorry about that. Thank you.
No, that's fine.
Okay. The second one is provide quality of measures for both before and after the introduction of HPOM.
Okay.
Third, provide information for charity care appeals.
Okay.
Provide a schedule of the charity care policy.
I thought it was the out-of-pocket fee schedule you guys wanted to see for late file number four.
There were actually, I believe, two of that one.
Yeah, we had the, you want to see the charity care policy? That was the appeal process for the charity care policy. That's number three. And number four was the out-of-pocket fee schedule.
Yes.
And the final one was provide a current case mix index and a case mix index if this proposal is approved.
And are we talking about projections for like one year? Like, when you say, so we have the current, obviously, it is what it is, whatever our current case mix index is. Is it something like what it would look like a year from now, or, you know, day one after the proposal? Is that, I just want to make sure we, again, get you exactly what you're looking for. Is it something like what it would look like a year from now or, you know, day one after the proposal? Is that, I just want to make sure we, again, get you exactly what you're looking for.
Let's do a year after. Like, we'll do what it currently is prior to acquisition and then a year after acquisition.
Okay, and is that it, Nicole? Okay, um, so we were thinking um by August, August, um, August ninth, hearing officer, no, if that's acceptable to you and your staff and your team?
No, that is morally acceptable. Do you need more time? I usually like to make sure you have plenty of time to get them in.
Yeah, um, unless anyone on the um OSS, the A C or the H P M team objects, we're going with August ninth, correct?
Correct.
August ninth, August ninth is fine. Thank you.
Great, okay, we will have those due by August ninth. Um, and we usually ask that they be due by four P M that day. If you have any issues with that, please um let us know prior to that day. And we can, um, you can always file for a request to an uh an extension on the filing of those.
Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, are there any additional questions or concerns about the late files, Attorney Karenanti?
No, not at this time.
All right, so at this point, I would like to offer you the um the chance to make a closing um argument or a um statement.
Sure, with your permission, hearing officer, no, we just like our CEO Stuart Bumber, just thirty seconds um on on closing remarks. Um, and then, you know, we thank you for your time. We we really appreciate the effort and all the time you've put into reviewing our application, but Stuart would like to make just a one-minute closing remark, and then and then we're good.
Thank you, and thanks for the extra thirty seconds. Thirty seconds might be tough. I'll I'll take the minute.
You can take more time if you.
Just reflecting on on this great hearing and thank you again for the time and uh the help that you're giving us in analyzing this proposal that we're making. Um, I guess, just, you know, that this increase from forty to seventeen percent, just if I could reflect on that for a minute, you know, this is this is a center that took us a very long time to find. We were looking for our first A S C partnership to be with really fantastic physicians, state-of-the-art facility, and that's exactly what the founders of O S S C put together. Um, and they didn't spare any expense, and they hired a great team of folks that that you've met today um who have been so enthusiastic about the growth of the center. A- as we all know, healthcare has changed a lot since O S S C opened, especially over the last few years after COVID, um, between cost of goods increasing, wage inflation, et cetera. It makes it harder and harder for the physicians to stay ahead of the curve and keep this vision that they had at the beginning, which is just, you know, the twenty-four hour stay, all of the different things that that these innovative doctors want to do, costs a lot of money. So, you know, this first partnership with the forty percent ownership certainly has paid dividends, and we think for all uh constituents, being the payers, the providers, and the patients. Um, and we've made significant investments like we spoke about, some maybe more than we would typically make with a forty percent ownership. Um, but we did that in good faith because we never put margins ahead of great patient care and long term relationships with our partners. But this extra eighteen percent, I think, will reduce the burden, the financial burden on the physicians for these big expenses that are going to be coming down the pike. Um, as these, a lot of the equipment has five-year life, uh, half-life. So we think, you know, being able to offload some of the financial burden and let them focus on the medicine um will be really helpful, again, for all the constituents that are involved here, and and especially cost of care and the quality of care. Um, what won't change is anything along the lines of clinical decision-making. For thirty years, that's been how we operate. Um, we will never get in the middle of that. And we think, you know, as long as we work with the right doctors and trust in their judgment, then um we'll have another thirty years. Maybe I won't be at the helm, but, you know, somebody will be. So, you know, I think that, uh, just wanted to clarify because there were some really good questions about, you know, what does that eighteen percent do? And I think it really does, again, unburden the docs from future investments. It allows Health Plus to hopefully get a return on their investment um in the future. Um, but at the same time, I think quality of care has increased since we've made our first forty percent, and if we're fortunate enough to be approved, we think we could make quality of care even better than it currently is. So thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Attorney Karante, anything else you would like to add?
No, besides for our appreciation uh for you and your staff, we 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 have nothing else to add.
All right, I would like to thank everybody for attending today. I'd like to thank you for coming back after the the fairly long break as well. Um, this hearing will be adjourned. I want to remind you that the record will remain open until closed by O H S, and if anybody would like to submit written comments, again, you have six, or sorry, seven days from today that will go through August se- August sixth um to submit co- written comments at C O N comment at C T dot gov. Thank you, everybody. I'm gonna close this hearing now at eleven forty-three A M. Have a great day.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Bye-bye.